It is my pleasure to be a part of the team from the Jamaica Information Service, JIS, who will be bringing you this afternoon's live opening ceremony. Thank you for joining us from wherever you are in the region and across the world. If you're watching us live on YouTube or any of our social media platforms, just drop a picture of your flag from your member country in the chat. And thank you again for joining us. Now, Jamaica assumed the chairmanship of CARICOM on July 1, 2025, and will hold this responsibility until December 31, 2025. At this, the 49th meeting of the heads of government, Prime Minister of Jamaica, Dr. The Most Honourable Andrew Michael Holness, will be leading the dialogue and actions under the theme, "People Partnerships: Prosperity Promoting a Secure and Sustainable Future." After this afternoon's opening ceremony, with all its pomp and symbolism, the business session will start tomorrow. Monday, July 7, when the CARICOM Heads or the Caucus of Heads begin two days of high-level talks. Now, this will be the most private level of discussions on matters that impact us all, from regional security, the CARICOM Single Market and Economy (CSME), to climate change, trade, and a list of other crucial matters. As Chairman-Prime Minister Holness will become the face and voice of the regional bloc, representing the body at international meetings, is expected to attend some major meetings, including the African Union, CARICOM Summit to be held in Ethiopia, the 80th anniversary of the United Nations in New York, and also the 30th United Nations Climate Change Conference, COP30, which will be held in Brazil later this year. Now, Jamaica will be doing its leg of the relay after receiving the baton from the erudite, the Honourable Mia Mor Motley, Prime Minister of Barbados, and the outgoing CARICOM chairman. We will hear from her later on in the program. Now, for a little background on CARICOM. A quick reminder that CARICOM is a vibrant grouping of 21 countries. There are 15 member states and six associate members, stretching from the Bahamas in the north to Suriname and Guyana in South America. Now, in a short while, we will see the proudly marching, we will see the CARICOM flag procession, with bearers from the Jamaica Combined Cadet Force proudly marching in with the national flags of member states. Now, remember to drop your flags in the chat if you're tuned in right now. Now, for a list of the full member states, they are Antigua and Bermuda, the Bahamas, Barbados, Belize, Dominica, Grenada, Guyana, Haiti, Jamaica, Monstrat, St. Getse Nevis, St. Lucia, St. Vincent and the Grenadines, Suriname, and Trinidad and Tobago. And the six associate members are Anguilla, Bermuda, British Virgin Islands, Cayman Islands, Curacao, and Turks and Caicos. Now, together, we are home to around 16 million people. And here is a fun fact for you. About 60% of the population within the region are under 30 years old. Now, that's a young, dynamic population made up of rich, diverse cultures: indigenous, African, Indian, European, Chinese, Portuguese, and Japanese roots, all blending in a colorful Caribbean tapestry. Now, this is wide representation here today. As a region, we may be small in size and population, but we're big on diversity. So whether it's reggae or steel, pan, jerk, chicken, or roti, CARICOM is all about the connections, culture, and Caribbean pride. If you're just joining us, welcome. And thanks for spending your Sunday afternoon with us at the opening ceremony, which will begin in a few moments. Right now, I can tell you that inside the Montego Bay Convention Center is vibrant and filled with anticipation of what is to come. The buzz in here around the room among nearly 1,000 guests as we wait the official arrivals of the heads of government of member states. The melodious sounds you are hearing in the background is that of the Jamaica Defense Force military band who are providing us with the musical prelude as the guests arrive. You are seeing on your screen right now, you are seeing on the screen right now Prime Minister of Jamaica, the Most Honourable Dr. Andrew Holness. And he will be joined by, or he's joined by the CARICOM Secretary, Dr. Paula Barnett, and they are awaiting the official, they are waiting to officially receive the heads of government. Now, a little bit more on CARICOM. CARICOM is a multilingual family with English as the main language, but you'll also hear some French and Dutch and their local twists along with African and Asian influences in the way people speak, sing, and celebrate across the region. Now, this afternoon's broadcast will be in both English and French. So thank you again for joining us and welcome to the Jamaica Information Service live broadcast of the opening ceremony for the 49th regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of CARICOM. We're broadcasting from the Montego Bay Convention Center in St. James, Jamaica, and we invite you to follow us on our various social media platforms over the next two days as we bring you highlights and updates from the conference. A reminder that this year's meeting will be held under the theme, "People Partnerships: Prosperity Promoting a Secure and Sustainable Future." We're now seeing Chairman of CARICOM, Prime Minister of Jamaica, Dr. Andrew Holness. And he's now completing the act of receiving all the heads of government as they will be seated inside the Montego Bay Convention Center for the official procession and introductions. As they enter to take their seats, the next voice that you will hear will be that of or compare, Mrs. Paula Anne Porter-Jones. She'll guide you through this evening's ceremony. You just saw Prime Minister, Dr. Andrew Holness, receive the Prime Minister of Belize and Lead Head of Government for Justice and Governance in CARICOM, the Honourable John Brusenyo. We're now seeing Prime Minister Holness receiving the Honourable Philip Davis, Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of Bahamas. CARICOM was established with the signing of the Treaty of Chacaramas in Trinidad and Tobago by Prime Ministers Errol Barrow of Barbados, Forbes Burnham for Guyana, Michael Manley for Jamaica, and Eric Williams for Trinidad and Tobago on the 4th of July, 1973. Now, the treaty was later revised in 2001 to allow for the eventual establishment of a single market and a single economy. All members have an equal say regardless of size or economic status, ensuring that all members have a voice in shaping the Caribbean community. The four pillars of regional integration are economic integration, foreign policy coordination, human and social development, and security. Now, these four pillars of regional integration provide a broad scope for developing an integration movement. CARICOM's integration movement is the longest-lasting of its kind in the developing world. Now, CARICOM has been a model for similar integration movements. In fact, African and Pacific countries have sent missions to study CARICOM's work in this area. We are now viewing more heads of government of CARICOM entering the Montego Bay Convention Center here in Montego Bay, St. James, taking their seats for the 49th regular meeting of the CARICOM Heads of Government opening ceremony. Now, the next voice you will hear will be that of or compare, Mrs. Paula Anne Porter-Jones, who will be guiding you through this evening's ceremony. I am Jada Francis, and I thank you for tuning in. It was a pleasure.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. You are invited to take your seats at this time. Ahead of the official start, we are asking members of the media to stay to the sides when taking photographs or videotaping, and if you must, in the center aisle, stay to the back. So again, we're asking members of the media to stay to the sides and to avoid the center aisle as much as possible, but if you must, we ask that you stay to the back of the center aisle. And we invite all other persons to take their seats at this time. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, just ahead of our official start, you are being invited to take your seats at this time.
We're now seeing the arrival of the Honorable Dr. Terrence Drew, Prime Minister of St. Kitts and Nevis. He's now greeting Prime Minister of Jamaica and Chairman of CARICOM, Dr. the Honorable Andrew Holness. As we await more arrivals of the CARICOM delegation, I'm gonna give you some facts about the Caribbean Public Health Agency, CARFA. And as I read these facts, I'm gonna ask you, if you already know some of these facts, would you just indicate in the chat so we can, you know, realize that you are up to date with your CARICOM notes? Now, did you know that CARFA is the new single-regional public health agency for the Caribbean that provides strategic direction in analyzing, defining, and responding to public health priorities of CARICOM member states and associate states in order to prevent disease, promote health, and to respond to public health emergencies? Now, how many of us knew that? Now, did you know as well that CARFA brings five regional health institutions together as one strong force under a public health umbrella where issues requiring a regional response can be addressed? The institutions include the Caribbean Environmental Health Institute, CEHI, SEHI, the Caribbean Epidemiology Center, the Caribbean Food and Nutrition Institute, the Caribbean Health Research Council, and the Caribbean Regional Drug Testing Laboratory. Now, did you also know that Caribbean Public Health Agency, CARFA, commemorated the 2025 iteration of Caribbean Mosquito Awareness Week from the 12th to the 16th of May? And that was under the theme "Stop Disease Transmission, Start Source Reduction." This year's campaign put a spotlight on the serious and growing threat of mosquito-borne diseases in the region, including dengue, Zika, chikungunya, and malaria. Now, citizens and institutions across the region were urged to take simple, effective steps while emptying stagnant water from containers and securely covering water storage drums, cleaning their drains and gutters to prevent blockages, and disposing of waste items that can collect rainwater in order to eliminate mosquito breeding sites which contribute to the spread of mosquito-borne diseases. Hmm. Also, did you know that there is a comprehensive toolkit to assist the member states in their national public education efforts around the commemoration of Caribbean Mosquito Awareness Week? Now, the CMAW toolkit can be found on CARFA's website, and it features a wide range of digital assets available in English, French, and Haitian Creole. The toolkit includes public resources, public education resources like posters, bookmarks, and a campaign jingle, as well as youth-focused items like social media reels. So we're getting the young people involved as well. And that's some quick facts on the Caribbean Public Health Agency, CARFA. So grade yourself out of five, because those are five interesting facts. Grade yourself out of five in the chat. Tell us how many out of five did you know about the CARFA Institute in CARICOM?
Ladies and gentlemen, as we get set to start, I'd like to ask you to take your seats at this time. And a gentle reminder to members of the media that you're being asked to remain to the sides and to the back of the center aisle. Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am Paula Anne Porter Jones, and it is my pleasure to welcome you to this, the opening ceremony, for the 49th Regular Meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community, under the theme "People, Partnerships, Prosperity: Promoting a Secure and Sustainable Future." The Prime Minister of Jamaica, Dr. the Most Honourable Andrew Holness, assumed his role and functions as Chairman of the Conference of Heads on July 1, 2025, for the period July 1 to December 31, 2025. As is customary, the meeting of the Conference of Caricom Heads is hosted during the six-month period of the chairmanship by the incumbent head of government of the designated member state, in this instance Jamaica. The heads of 15 member states and six associate member states of Caricom are therefore gathered here in Montego Bay at the Montego Bay Convention Center for high-level discussions concerning the Caricom agenda, including priority policy issues at the regional and international levels that are of interest to the community in general and germane to development at the local level. Guests are reminded that you are asked to remain seated during the ceremony, but to stand for the arrival and departure of the Prime Minister of Jamaica and the procession of heads of state and government, and also during the playing of the Jamaican National Anthem. At this time, we ask all our guests to be seated. The members of the Jamaica Combined Cadet Force are the proud flag bearers this afternoon for the ceremonial procession of the national emblems of the Caribbean countries. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, please stand... Please remain seated for the procession of the flags, and afterwards, I ask you to stand for the arrival of the dignitaries. And now, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the arrival of our dignitaries. Dr. Carla Barnett, Secretary General of the Caribbean Community. Ladies and gentlemen, the heads of state and government and of the official delegations of the Caribbean Community. The Honourable Gaston Brown, Prime Minister of Antigua and Barbuda. The Honourable Philip Davis, Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. The Honourable Mia Amor Motley, Prime Minister of the Republic of Barbados. The Honourable John Antonio Brissano, Prime Minister of Belize. The Honourable Dr. Vince Henderson, Minister of Foreign Affairs, Foreign Trade, Culture and Immigration, Head of Delegation of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. and Immigration, Head of Delegation of the Commonwealth of Dominica. The Honourable Joseph Andel, Minister of Foreign Affairs, Trade and Export Development, Head of the Delegation of Grenada. We recognize His Excellency Dr. Mohammed Urfan Ali, President of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana, who will be joining us later this evening. His Excellency Mr. Lawrence Sansir, Counselor President of Haiti’s Transitional Presidential Council. The Honourable Veronica Hector, Deputy Premier, Head of Delegation of Montserrat. The Honourable Dr. Terence Drew, Prime Minister of Saint Kitts and Nevis. The Honourable Alva Baptiste, Minister of External Affairs, International Trade, Civil Aviation and Diaspora Affairs, Head of Delegation of Saint Lucia. Dr. the Honourable Ralph Gonzalez, Prime Minister of Saint Vincent and the Grenadines. The Honourable Stephen Humphrey McAndrew, Minister of Labor, Employment, Opportunity and Youth Affairs, Head of the Delegation of the Republic of Suriname. The Honourable Sean Sobers, Minister of Foreign Affairs and Caricom Affairs, Head of Delegation of the Republic of Trinidad and Tobago. The Honourable E. David Burt, Premier of Bermuda. Dr. the Honourable Natalio Wheatley, Premier of the British Virgin Islands. His Excellency Kilmar Piesas, Prime Minister of Curacao. The Honourable Jamel Rayan Robinson, Deputy Premier and Minister of Immigration and Border Services, Head of Delegation Turks and Caicos Islands. Dr. the Most Honourable Andrew Holness, Prime Minister of Jamaica and Chairman of Caricom! And as Dr. Holness takes his place, we invite the official photographers from JIS, OPM and Caricom to come forward and take your photographs at this time. The official photographers are invited to come forward from JIS, OPM and Caricom to take your photographs at this time. Thank you. And now ladies and gentlemen, the National Anthem of Jamaica. Thank you, Your Excellences, you may now be seated. Or I should say, Your Excellences, you may return to your seats, but we invite all to remain standing, as we ask Bishop the Honourable Conrad Pitkin, Custos Rotolorum for the Parish of St James, and Senior Pastor, Faith Temple Assembly of God, to bring the invocation.
Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Let us pray. Almighty God, we acknowledge you as Creator and sovereign ruler of all. You are the fountain of all greatness, the source of all power, and to you belong all glory, splendor and majesty. Faithful God, as we are gathered here today for the commencement of the forty-ninth session of Caricom, we do so with grateful hearts. Father, we thank you for planting the vision into the minds of those leaders who through grit and determination oversaw the birth of this great institution. We are grateful for the principles and values that undergird it and for the common purpose that continues to drive its existence. Cause, oh God, this forty-ninth session that will demonstrate an unwavering commitment to the well-being of the peoples of the region and a boldness to move from talk to action on those things that threaten our future. Be with the Chairman, Andrew, Prime Minister of Jamaica, other leaders, technocrats, advisors and everyone who is playing a support role as they deliberate and decide over these days. Grant them a renewed sense of urgency and clarity of vision that will inspire generations yet unborn to make this region their place of choice to live. May they be encouraged by the challenge of Psalm 127 verse 1, which declares, “Except the Lord build the house; their labor in vain that built it. Except the Lord keep the city, the watchman stays awake but in vain.” Oh Lord, may this time of deliberation be one that will strengthen the ties between the peoples of the Caribbean as we commit to working together for the flourishing of human, humanity and the nations of the world. May the memory of today’s session linger long in our hearts, inspiring us to reignite our prospective national resolve to strive for greatness. Gracious God, help us to continue working so that our nations will be marked by peace, mercy, love and justice. All these we ask in your great and holy name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you Bishop Pitkin. Ladies and gentlemen, you may be seated. Dr. the Most Honourable Andrew Holness, Prime Minister of Jamaica and Chairman of Caricom, Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community, Secretary General of the Caribbean Community, Dr. Carla Barnett, Members of the Cabinet of Jamaica, Ministers of Government of other Caribbean states, Judicial Leaders of Jamaica and the Caribbean, Members of the Diplomatic Corps, Executive Members of the Caricom Secretariat, Secretary General of Interpol, Mr. Valdisi Erkiza, Secretary General of the Organization of American States, His Excellency Albert Ramdin, Other officials of government, Other members of delegations, Members of the media, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, all, good afternoon. It is my pleasure to be your guide through this afternoon’s proceedings, and we now move to the official Caricom song. It is the official patriotic song of the Caribbean community. It celebrates the history, culture and identity of the people of the Caribbean. It inspires regional pride and unity. It celebrates our diversity, our shared vision and our aspirations. Corporal Jada Massam from the Jamaica Constabulary Force and/or 2024 Jamaica Gospel Star is on stage to sing the Caricom song. Let’s give her a round of applause.
(Singing) From many distant lands, our forefathers came. Some seeking adventure, some bound in chains. Through battles waged and fought, through victory and pain. By test of their courage, oh freedom was gained. In homage to those gone before us, the heroes are land in the sun. We vow to join hands and to focus on building one Caribbean. Raise your voices high, sing off your Caribbean pride. Sing it loud and strong, feel our hearts beat as one. Celebrate in song, as we rise through heights where we belong. Sound the victory drum, Caricom. Though great and diverse be, or ethnicities. The bonds that unite us are stronger than these. We dine, we pray, we love, we dance and we play. The test of their courage, the western way. Today as a people united, determined and steadfast we stand. We look to a brand new horizon, the future now firmly in our hands. Raise your voices high, sing off your Caribbean pride. Sing it loud and strong, feel our hearts beat as one. Celebrate in song, as we rise through heights where we belong. Sound the victory drum, for Caricom. Helle, helle, wapo, sing the song, Caricom. Helle, helle! Sing the song, Caricom, oh! Caricom, oh, Caricom, oh! Raise your voices high, sing off your Caribbean pride. Sing it loud and strong, feel our hearts beat as one. Celebrate in song, as we rise through heights where we belong. Sound the victory drum, for Caricom. Helle, helle, wapo! Helle, helle! Le, 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 wapo! Machetrambo, Caricom, oh! Caricom, oh, Caricom, eh! Caricom, oh!
Beautiful song and beautiful rendition. Thank you Madame Massam. And now ladies and gentlemen, to deliver the evening’s official welcome, it’s a pleasure to invite Dr. Aubrey Stewart, a youth leader and advocate, to the podium. Let’s welcome him please.
Excellencies... Excellencies, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. My name is Aubrey Stewart, a youth leader born and raised in the city of Montego Bay. For many years, Montego Bay was known not just for its beautiful beaches, resorts and culture, but also for its challenges. Growing up here meant hearing the constant echo of sirens, more often than sounds of celebration, and watching the hope of our people dimmed by the weight of crime and hardship. But today, Montego Bay, like many parts of Jamaica, stands as a living proof of transformation. My country stands as a place guided by a focused pursuit of peace, development and growing prosperity, one community at a time. The same corners that once echoed with grief now carry the rhythm of growth. The same youth who once felt abandoned now dare to dream again. Dreams carried on the sound of music, where ordinary people have made extraordinary contributions to the world, and where hills and valleys echoes with stories of survival, sacrifice and strength. My country stands as a testament that what can be achieved even in the face of its greatest odds. Yet, I must tell you, my city and country are not alone on their journey, nor in their struggles. Across the Caribbean, there are many communities like mine, some larger, small and some remote. And while some have seen incremental progress and others exponential leaps forward, there are still too many where the wounds of the past remain open and the promise of progress and integration still feels far out of reach. So, we must speak of those places as well. We must speak of our brothers and sisters in Haiti, whose cries are still echoing across our region, tears not just for help, but for the right to dream freely and to be unburdened by conflict and despair. Our collective support must move beyond words of speeches and become real, measurable, meaningful and rooted in compassion for the Haitian people. This is more than just an act of kindness, this is a safeguard for regional stability. For if we turn away from Haiti’s cries, we open the door for we open the door for those who would prey on its pain and fracture our region with weapon and fear. In like manner, as the world moves forward with artificial intelligence, we in the Caribbean must not forget about the human connection, the connection that enhances our integration. Let us not lose sight of the voices around us, the voices of young people in Antigua who are proud of their government's commitment in establishing direct flights between Jamaica and Antigua, bringing them closer to their friends and family. Let us not forget the youth in Dominica, St. Vincent de Nieves, Guyana, and other nations who are hopeful and eager to experience a tangible growth of a growing economy so that they too can help and build and share in a stronger, more connected, and self-sustaining Caribbean. We say, remember us. Remember those who are still on the margins. Remember that real integration means building systems that work for everyone. So, as we talk about AI, let us also remember, hey, I need you. The voice, the human voices calling for fairness, justice, and opportunities. Justice for the environment, justice for those affected by climate change, and justice for our history, including reparatory justice for those generations still carrying the burden of exploitation. So, as you deliberate in this forty-ninth sitting, if we're serious about people, partnership, and prosperity, we must go beyond the ceremonial. Let us transform education systems. Let us truly invest in securing our region as a zone of peace. Let us create economic spaces for youth and marginalized communities. And let us truly advance the promise of the Caribbean single market and economy. I believe the time for action is now. Let us choose peace not just in the absence of violence but in the presence of justice. Let us choose love not just in sentiment but in service. Let us choose unity not just as a slogan but as a strategy. CARICOM to me is not just a group of countries. It is an ideal. It is hope. It is the belief that we are stronger together than we could ever be alone. So, today, on behalf of the youth of Jamaica and the Caribbean, I welcome you. But more than that, I welcome you to a Caribbean ready to rise with purpose, ready to rise with courage, and ready to rise together. Welcome to Jamrock. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr Stewart. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, this songbird brings an authentic perspective to her music, blending her experiences into a tapestry of reggae storytelling. Performing "I Shall Sing" by the legendary Queen of Reggae Marcia Griffiths, here is Janil Mills.
I shall sing as long as I live and as long as I live. I shall sing. I shall sing as long as I live and as long as I live. I shall sing. Even though I'm old but I'm young, I little weak but I know I am strong. Old enough to know what's right, young enough to dance all night, too weak to hold it back, strong enough to give your heart attack. The situation sweep my soul. As long as I live, I shall sing. As long as I live and as long as I live, I shall sing. Yes, I shall sing. As long as I live and as long as I live, I shall sing. Ooh, in my days I've seen many faces and been many places. Too late to turn back now. If I do, Jam will strike me down. Yes, I have places to go. Yes, and a lot of things to do. If you think I'd give it up now, as long as I live, I shall sing. As long as I live and as long as I live, I shall sing. Yes, I shall sing. As long as I live and as long as I live, I shall sing. And I shall sing as long as I live and as long as I live. I shall sing. Yes, I shall sing. As long as I live and as long as I live, I shall sing.
Janil Mills. Thank you, Janil. Dr Carla Barnett, Secretary General of the Caribbean Community, now officially opens the forty-ninth regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community with her remarks. Help me welcome her, please.
Thank you very much, Doctor the Honourable Andrew Holness, Prime Minister of Jamaica and Chairman of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community. Honourable Mia Motley, Prime Minister of Barbados and outgoing Chair of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community, Your Excellencies Heads of State and Government of CARICOM, Members of Parliament of Jamaica, Honourable Ministers, Your Excellency Valdisi Urquiza, Secretary General of the International Criminal Police Organization Interpol, His Excellency Albert Ramdin, Secretary General of the Organization of American States, other distinguished delegates, heads of regional and international organizations, members of the Diplomatic Corps, other distinguished guests, citizens of the Caribbean community, representatives of the media, ladies and gentlemen. It is wonderful to be here in Jamaica's beautiful second city, Montego Bay, and to welcome you to this forty-ninth regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community. The warmth and hospitality which we have received since our arrival have been exceptional. On behalf of CARICOM, I express deep appreciation to Prime Minister, Doctor the Honourable Andrew Holness, and to the people of Jamaica for providing such a favorable setting in which to conduct the business of the community. Jamaica features highly in CARICOM's history. This land of wood and water was one of the first four nations to signal its commitment to our integration movement by signing the original Treaty of Chaguaramas in 1973. The Rose Hall Declaration, which aimed to deepen integration and strengthen governance in CARICOM, was adopted here at the twenty-fourth meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government in July of 2003. Several other pivotal regular meetings of the Conference of CARICOM Heads of Government have also been hosted here. I am therefore very hopeful that the outcomes of this forty-ninth regular meeting will be no less impactful. As we grappled with worrying geopolitical issues over the last six months, CARICOM has been led with decisiveness and foresight by the outgoing Chair, Honourable Mia Motley, Prime Minister of Barbados. Prime Minister Motley, we thank you for your dedication to amplifying the region's voice on important issues and to its economic advancement, including through your leadership of the ongoing initiatives to strengthen the CARICOM single market and economy. We now formally welcome Doctor the Most Honourable Andrew Holness, Prime Minister of Jamaica, to the role of Chair of the Conference. As Lead Head on External Trade Negotiations in CARICOM's Quisai Cabinet, Prime Minister Holness is strategically placed to pilot us through the current uncertainties of the international trading system. CARICOM also highly appreciates the leadership role Jamaica has played in efforts to strengthen security and stability in Haiti. Mr Chairman, you can be assured of the continued support of the Secretariat as you lead our community's agenda for the next six months. Since our last regular meeting in Barbados, the community has welcomed new and re-elected leaders following general elections. In this regard, the Honourable Kamala Persad Besessar, Prime Minister of Trinidad and Tobago, again joins the conference following her victory in parliamentary elections in April. The Honourable John Brissena was returned as Prime Minister of Belize. We also recognize His Excellency Gilmar Pisas, who returned as Prime Minister of Curacao following their elections. Honourable Cora Richardson-Hodge, the first female Premier in Anguilla, and the Honourable Andre Ebang, Premier of the Cayman Islands, were elected. Congratulations to them all. Earlier today, I was pleased to witness the inauguration of the Honourable Mr Justice Winston Anderson of Jamaica as the President of the Caribbean Court of Justice. Mr President, congratulations on your appointment to this important regional body. We look forward to the benefit of your experience, intellect, and well-known dedication to the rule of law as we collectively seek to deliver enhanced frameworks for justice within the community. Excellencies, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, the theme which anchors this meeting of the conference, people, partnerships, prosperity, promoting a secure and prosperous future, goes to the heart of the promise given to the people of our region when the original Treaty of Chaguaramas was signed. This meeting's agenda has intentionally focused on consequential issues such as climate change and climate finance, external trade, food and nutrition security, the situation in Haiti, and citizen security including transnational organized crime and cyber threats. In this regard, we have as a special guest for this meeting the Secretary General of the International Criminal Police Organization Interpol, His Excellency Valdisi Urquiza. Excellency, we warmly welcome you and look forward to productive exchanges with our Heads of Government. Secretary General Albert Ramdin of the Organization of American States also joins us as special guest. SG Ramdin chaired his first General Assembly in Antigua and Bermuda as the new Secretary General of the Organization of American States just last week. Your Excellency, welcome. We look forward to fruitful discussions with you as well. Early yesterday morning, I was delighted to witness professional and amateur athletes, including the Chair of the Conference, as they crossed the finish line in the eighteenth CARICOM road race. Congratulations to all participants and winners. The road race is a good example of integration in action. It demonstrates our commitment to healthy living, which has been translated at the international level through the region's leadership and advocacy on addressing non-communicable diseases. We anticipate robust CARICOM participation at the fourth high-level meeting on the prevention and control of non-communicable diseases, which is scheduled for September as part of the eighty-eighth United Nations General Assembly. Our collective efforts have delivered many commendable results for the people of the region in human and social development, economic integration, foreign policy coordination, and security. After more than fifty years as a regional integration movement, we are well aware of its value and its potential as a catalyst for sustainable development, resilience, and global competitiveness. Together, we have overcome many challenges that our small nations could not have overcome alone. We have faced military invasions by third states and tackled political instability in some parts of the region. We guided our citizens through the COVID-19 pandemic and its devastating aftermath on our economies, especially the shipping disruptions which threatened food supply. In response, we have focused with some success on agriculture production to enhance our food security. We have come together to deal with the overwhelming after effects of hurricanes, earthquakes, volcanic eruptions, and other natural disasters. But even as we celebrate our successes, we have to acknowledge the challenges that we continue to face in implementing important aspects of our integration project. The CARICOM Single Market and Economy, which is designed to facilitate the free movement of goods, services, financing, and people in the interest of increased economic and market efficiency, continues to fall behind expectations. We hope that this meeting will see a recommitment to strengthening the implementation of the CSME with a view to ensuring that all aspects of the regimes can be evenly and effectively implemented across the region as intended by the framers of the treaty. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, in spite of our challenges and our often adverse circumstances, CARICOM can feel rightly proud of the successes we have achieved. Our victories are testament to our strength in unity and provide a useful roadmap as we chart our path forward. As noted in the 2017 report of the Golden Commission, which reviewed Jamaica's relations with CARICOM and Cariforum Frameworks, and I quote, "The value of regional integration, notwithstanding the current wave of economic nationalism in various parts of the world, is as relevant and useful and perhaps even more urgent today than it was at its inception." End of quote. Eight years later, this statement resonates even more. Unprecedented global uncertainty, economic pressures, technological innovations, and our challenge that challenge our capacity to keep pace, climate vulnerability and the needs of our young people, our women, and future generations compel us to act collectively with courage and with conviction. As much as we remain committed to the aims and objectives set out in the revised Treaty of Chaguaramas, we must also remain cognizant that moving forward is more difficult for some of us. In the spirit of family, we should seek to address the concerns of all if we are to be a community that benefits everyone in the region. As several of our regional statesmen have been known to say, "If CARICOM did not exist, we would have to invent it." And to borrow from one of Jamaica's national icons, Honourable Robert Nestor Marley, "Our guiding principle must continue to be one love, one heart, one destiny." Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, together we have nurtured a strong Caribbean identity that transcends borders, that is admired globally and to which others aspire. As we begin our deliberations for this forty-ninth meeting of the conference, I encourage all of us to retain our focus on the purpose of our partnership, which is the prosperity, security, and well-being of all the people of our region. Let this forty-ninth meeting be a defining moment in the history of our integration movement where we stand resolutely together, supporting the hopes and aspirations of all our citizens. Here in Montego Bay, we can and we will have clear and frank conversations. We will set realistic and bold objectives that can propel us even further towards a Caribbean community that will be stronger, safer, and more prosperous for generations to come. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Madam Secretary General. The CARICOM Youth Ambassador Program was launched in 1993 by the heads of government to mark the 20th anniversary of CARICOM, and it was formally instituted in 1994. Since its inception, the program has assisted in integrating the views and perspectives of young people from across the region into national, regional, and international policy and programs. We now have declarations by Jamaica's CARICOM Youth Ambassadors, Ms. Crystal Paris Campbell and Mister Odean Brooks.
Doctor the Most Honourable Andrew Holness, Prime Minister of Jamaica and Chair of CARICOM, Secretary General of CARICOM, Heads of Government, Ministers of Government from Jamaica and across the region, Excellencies, distinguished guests, good evening. I am Crystal Paris Campbell. Mister Odean Brooks and I are CARICOM Youth Ambassadors for the island of Jamaica, and we are here to bring our declarations on behalf of the youth of the Caribbean. We join in the celebration of the 52nd anniversary of the establishment of CARICOM, which is one of the oldest surviving regional organizations in the developing world. The significance of this achievement is not lost on us as we understand our history as a region overcoming close to four hundred years of enslavement and indenture ship, a time when we could not choose our own destinies, nor could we govern ourselves. Fifty-two years of CARICOM signifies our region's dedication to partnership through regional integration. The theme of this meeting, people, partnerships, and prosperity, promoting a secure and sustainable future, captures the aspirations that unite us. For young people across the Caribbean, we hope that our societies can be safe, innovative, and resilient in the face of unprecedented change. The Caribbean has made major strides in our shared cultural and historical architecture, education and training, along with strengthened economic and social infrastructure. We are faced with the persistent challenges of transnational and domestic security concerns. For our youth, the concept of security has transcended beyond policing and now encapsulates a strong point of reference to the creation of pathways to decent work and the building of trust between citizens and public authorities. Strengthening border security through bilateral partnerships with our international counterparts must remain our top priority in order to halt the flow of illicit weapons and narcotics within the region. A secure Caribbean demands deeper cooperation, better intelligence sharing, and modern tools that balance protection with prevention. At the same time, climate change is reshaping our economies and daily lives. Hurricane Burial greatly impacted our region just one year ago. While international climate financing has expanded, small island states still face hurdles in turning pledges into action. We urge CARICOM to continue efforts to advocate for reforms in the international arena that support Vulnerability Index, climate financing, and readiness support. This is critical to build our institutional capacity and to help countries move from merely thinking about climate resilience to delivering actual resilience for our people.
The promise of the single market economy has never been more vital for our young people. For entrepreneurs and youth alike, integration is essential to turn ambitions into achievements. As young people, we advocate that CARICOM continues the effort to simplify trade, harmonize regulations, and modernize processes that will enable businesses and trade to grow across borders and create a truly Caribbean economy. Underlying all of this is our conviction that innovation must be the center of our strategy. Young people across the region are leading in technology, creative industries, and digital services. To accelerate this, we must accelerate our coordinated actions to incentivize our startups, investments in research and development, and stronger partnerships that connects our talent to our regional and global markets. Mister Chair, distinguished heads, this generation is not waiting on the sidelines. We are ready to stand with you to build societies that are safer, economies that are more integrated, and industries driven by creativity and resilience. Let this be the moment when vision is matched by decisive action, when security is strengthened, when climate financing meets the need of, meet the scale of our needs, when integration becomes our reality, and when innovation drives our shared prosperity. Together, we can ensure the promise of people, partnership, and prosperity reach every young person across the Caribbean. We thank you.
And we thank you, Youth Ambassadors. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, we now invite the Honourable Mia Amor Motley, Prime Minister of the Republic of Barbados and outgoing Chairman of the Caribbean Community, to bring remarks. Let's welcome her.
Most Honourable Andrew Holness, Prime Minister of Jamaica and Chairman of CARICOM, distinguished colleague Heads of Government, and Ministers representing their countries, Members of the Cabinet of Jamaica, distinguished guests, all. It was in 2018 July that I first addressed the CARICOM Heads of Government Meeting as Prime Minister of Barbados in this very room, in this very town. I did so as a young, romantic, idealist, and a fervent believer of the regional integration movement. Today, I stand to address you with scars and bruises, but still as a young, romantic idealist. And I say so conscious that over the course of these seven years, our community has perhaps seen more challenges than we have ever seen since attaining independence. Indeed, some may argue more challenges than we have ever seen since the famous September 1947 Montego Bay Conference, which called for a regional integration movement such as we have to be able to allow us to more effectively navigate our development journey. We live in a very different world from 1947. But if ever there was a time for regional solidarity, it is absolutely now. And Secretary General, I thank you for outlining some of the concerns that we face. When I addressed the Heads of Government Meeting in Barbados a few months ago, I made the point that this was a time for us to lay bare our hearts and to be able to speak frankly, to build the institution that we want. I note that immediately as I finished speaking, there is going to be a song from Ramon Watson, from that great Caribbean icon Jimmy Cliff. And the song that they've chosen is that I can see clearly now. But I would mind, I wouldn't mind if they added to that not just the power of vision, because I think across this region we have that, but the power of trial and effort. And there is no better song, I call myself in fact a Jimmy Cliff girl, there is no better song than you can get it if you really want, but you must try and try, you'll succeed at last. It is against that backdrop that I ask us to reflect on a few things today. We met and understood that our region, like every other region across the world, is suffering from the vicissitudes of cost of living, issues that are making it more difficult for ordinary Caribbean people to make each day and to go through each day and night. And the question for us as Heads of Government and Heads of State is how do we make it easier for people to sleep? And how do we allow them to be able to undertake that task of taking care of themselves and their families in the most easier ways in spite of what has been triggered globally through geopolitical issues and wars and conflict and disruption supplies? We have determined that our agricultural commitment, twenty-five by twenty-five, even if we have not met it fully, has put us in a better place than we were five years ago. But what we must not do is to stop, because if we try and try again, we'll succeed at last. Against that backdrop, a number of persons on a trade delegation week before last went to Boavista in Brazil to begin to open up the trading relationships that will allow us also to access food and meat at much cheaper prices than we are currently doing so. It is true that the actions of the United States government and their promise to impose tariffs on all Chinese-made ships created a catalyst for movement in a way that we could not find on our own. And if anything, we must thank President Trump and the U.S. Trade Representative for that. Mercifully, there was a stay of execution on the imposition of that tariff a few months ago. And I want to thank the Caribbean Private Sector Organization for working with us as Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community. An amazing five hundred members of the private sector went on to a Zoom call showing that when our vital interests are truly challenged, we know how to find unity in this region. If we cannot open up greater supply routes, if we can increase our domestic production, cognizant however that we are constantly at risk of the climate crisis decimating that which we are trying to do in terms of open field agriculture, then we can begin to recognize that we do have the capacity to feed ourselves more. The bottom line is, however, that there are still too many gaps. And the major issue of logistics, I am happy to report, that there are at least two CARICOM member states that are now in the process of looking to acquire cargo planes to help us overcome the very difficult prospect of the movement of goods within this region. Equally, I anticipate that at this meeting at Montego Bay, we will have the presentation on the inter-island regional ferry from the private sector. And at this point, it is up to us to determine whether we have the political will to finally ensure that we can democratize travel through ships yet again in this region, knowing full well that with a federal maple and a federal palm, there were examples of it many decades ago, and that we have allowed ourselves to become purely at the mercy of air travel without recognizing that as islands in the Caribbean Sea, we have the ability to reach each other in good time and at cheaper fares than if we only use air to connect our region. Tomorrow, we shall also receive the completed work on the CARICOM External Tariff C E T and the Rules of Origin, and I want to thank all at Co-TED and Community Council for teeing it up. We did think that you were taking a little long, but it is finally here. The political judgment that has to be made by heads now is what other items that will not compromise regional production that can have the bung rates continue to be reduced so that we can see more progress on the reduction of cost of living, particularly of food and sanitary items. But this meeting will not only see these matters. We have come before our region to speak specifically of other things that are threatening our existence as a region. We live in a world now where fake news regrettably is a key part of all that we have, and where the improper use of AI can sometimes stoke great fear and panic among our citizens. It is about time, therefore, that we as a region come up with a CARICOM validation mechanism in the absence of the providers of those platforms not taking the action to validate truth any further. And if we fail to do so, if we fail to do so, we put seriously at risk the stability of our democracies. In the last two weeks alone, my government in Barbados has had to put out as clear fake news, one that sought to ban President Trump from our country, one that sought to impose on Barbados travel advisories that didn't exist. And it is almost as if this is a daily exercise now for our countries, because those who have nothing to do, as we learned as children, the devil finds work for idle hands. We need our own CARICOM blue tick to validate truth in this community. In addition to that, I ask us equally to look at the issue of where we are with respect to citizen security. Today, the Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community met with the Heads of Judiciary, and we did so as an absolute item of respect on the part of both groupings. It was a historic meeting, and it was one that recognized, as your Chief Justice in Jamaica put it, that it is possible for the judiciary to meet, remain independent, but not isolated from the communities in which they operate. This is so critical, not just for the development of Caribbean jurisprudence, but also for the stability of our democracies. There is no country in this region that is not facing some level of citizen insecurity. And regrettably, I've said over and over, we pay a high price for the Second Amendment rights of the United States, of America's citizens. But whatever the cause, the reality is, this is where we are. If ever there was a time for us to cooperate, as we discussed today, on matters pertaining to this, and Jamaica has put on the table a Regional Justice and Security Framework Cooperation Agreement, which I believe the rest of us are ready to engage in, because it is consistent with the Needham's Point Declaration of 2023 that was settled by the Caribbean Court of Justice Academy and the judges of the region. It is consistent with the George Bridge Declaration of November 2024 that was settled by the CARICOM Heads of Government, and it is absolutely needed by our citizens if we are to see safety be the primary concern of our people from Jamaica and the Bahamas in the north, to Belize in the west, to Barbados in the east, to Ghana and Suriname in the south. And of course, underpinning all of that is that wonderful island chain of the eastern Caribbean states. We have a duty to our citizens. It would be remiss of me not to salute Winston Anderson, the new President of the Caribbean Court of Justice, and may I say, the President of my own Court of Appeal, final Court of Appeal in Barbados. And you will forgive me having been the one who was the And you will forgive me, having been the one who was the chair of the preparatory committee for the establishment of the Caribbean Court of Justice. You will forgive me if I now make yet another appeal to the citizens of this region, to allow their governments to know that there ought to be a singular purpose for the Caribbean Court of Justice to be truly the last Court of Appeal for the states of this region. We are aware that there are some countries that have the requirement of referendum. But this, like everything else, ought to be the subject of public education. And if we can so do, then I believe we can finally start to move the needle generationally for us recognising that this ought to be our final court. Our reality as small states is not only to be taken into account when dealing with the WTO and the need for special and differential treatment, or the international financial architecture that requires us to move away from the reality of assumptions with historic per capita GDP and not understanding the vulnerability of our countries as small states. But our small vulnerable states are also to be taken into account with respect to our Caribbean jurisprudence and for how we treat to the issue of citizenship security, particularly as it relates to sensitive matters that will see persons who have been charged continue to move in our communities with impunity and taking action against other citizens with impunity. Let me however also reflect that over the course of this last six months, one of our major, major concerns was the stability of Haiti. The world really needs a check on itself when it comes to Haiti. If ever we doubted that there were first-class and second-class citizens in the eyes of the world, don't doubt it anymore. In Haiti, more people were killed last year, in many months of last year, than were killed in any other country on earth, including those that were at war and the subject of military conflict. And in spite of that, and in spite of the promises, the world has been able to move, has been able, has been unable to move beyond the promises and the platitudes that would bring help to the people of Haiti. I'm not only talking about the loss of life, I'm talking about the displacement of citizens from their homes, I'm talking equally about the food insecurity of the people of Haiti. And let us be real, our capacity as a Caribbean community has limits purely because of size and capacity financially. We can help as best we can, as we must, but the world is what is needed as well at this point in time, beyond simply the deployment of troops from Kenya without the requisite support in terms of machinery that is necessary to ensure that those Kenyan troops and others are not sent like lambs to the slaughter along with the members of the Haitian police force. That Haiti is trying as best it can to be able to withstand the assault by gangs is to be commended, but at the same time, it is not enough. And what is required more than ever is for a truth talk, both within the context of what is possible from Haiti's perspective, but equally what is possible from the international community. And I fear that the absence of that realistic conversation will continue to mean that ordinary citizens will have their lives put at risk, and if not their lives, their limbs, and if not their lives and limbs, their ability to live as dignified human beings. The pace at which progress is needed must be expedited if we are not to see more and more people suffer. At the same time, in the last six months, we have had the issue of the spectacle of near difficulties with the border security situation between Guyana and Venezuela. I thank Prime Minister Gonzalez yet again for continuing to play a serious role along with Prime Minister Skerritt in ensuring that we could have the principles of the Argyle Declaration continue to be respected, even if in a tenuous way. And I recognise that this is going to require our continuous vigilance as we go forward, because we are all committed to seeing the Caribbean as a zone of peace at the level of the state and equally at the level of the citizen with respect to citizenship security and insecurity. We have unfinished business. The Caribbean Educational Transformation Commission must be established as a matter of urgency, for all of us continue to adhere to an educational system that is not fit for purpose for our citizens today. And we need to make those changes, informed by data, informed by evidence, but the longer we take to put that commission in place, the longer we take to make the changes that are necessary to give our young people the best possible chance. Equally, we are required at this time to recognise that there are actions outside of this region that will demand our solidarity. I speak specifically as early as this week of the actions of the European Parliament with respect to the failure to delist countries like Barbados and Jamaica, who have come off of the Financial Action Task Force list for more than one year, but for whom we remain on the European Union's enhanced delegated lists, along with countries like Gibraltar and UAE that are the subject of their opposition. But because of a technical mechanism by which they remove countries, Barbados and Jamaica continue to suffer at the hands of the listing process when we have been deemed to be fully compliant with all of the obligations required of us from the Financial Action Task Force. It is wrong, and if it was the shoe on the other foot, if the shoe was on the other foot, we would be told how to find ways of having our parliament change the manner in which we address this issue, rather than grouping all of the countries in one basket to be the victims of any opposition on any country in spite of the progress made by our countries. I raise these issues because as I said at the beginning, if ever there was a time for us to celebrate solidarity and to be able to work together, it is now. And I am not daunted whatsoever by our failure to get it in one go. And that is why I said that at the beginning, I am a Jimmy Cliff girl. We can get it if we really want, but we must try and try. The CSME was the subject of a dedicated conference when we left Montego Bay on the last occasion, and it resulted in the St Anne's Declaration in December of 2018. But there are some difficult issues that we must confront. And we have heard one prime minister and one leader of the opposition question the validity of this entity within recent weeks and months. But if we are to be honest with ourselves and with our populations across this region, and we must start the public education process, it is largely because of our inability to find an appropriate mechanism for the funding of the CARICOM Development Fund. And even if every country in the region put money in it, it would still not be enough to finance disadvantaged countries, disadvantaged sectors and disadvantaged regions, which are the consequence of any single market and single economy. It is against that backdrop that I've asked that we look at taking some of the excess regional liquidity that exists and finding a way with the cooperation of those who can help us put the guarantees in place so that our region can start to finance our own development. There are only two countries in the region who provide interest rates in excess of five percent for savings. The majority of CARICOM countries have interest rates that are below three percent, and therefore we are in a position to be able to offer the opportunity for the participation of CARICOM bonds to our citizens at rates of return that are competitive with private commercial banks but are still lower than the lending being offered to many countries on the international capital markets. At the same time, in the last six months, we have done significant work to advance for the first time a regional debt swap initiative. My own country Barbados has now done two debt swap initiatives, one for nature and one for climate. In both instances, we have increased our capacity in respect of the nature one for Marine Sustainability Trusts, and with respect to the climate one for the construction of a new South Coast sewage treatment plant, without increasing our debt by a single cent. And that is simply through the use of the regional debt swap initiative. The President of the World Bank, the President of the Inter-American Development Bank, the President of the Latin American and Caribbean Development Bank, and the President of the Caribbean Development Bank have all come together to lead this region on the regional debt swap initiative. And so attractive has been the proposal that countries like the Dominican Republic and other Central American countries have indicated a desire to be part of this regional debt swap initiative. In our own case in Barbados, we have determined that our next debt swap will not be for climate, but will be for the social sectors, and we look forward to other countries in the region joining us, such that this Caribbean community region will lead the world in having the first regional debt swap initiative globally. In addition, may I remind you that there is also the natural disaster clauses which ought to find primacy of place in all of our international and regional financial instruments. Our country just went to the capital market and raised five hundred million US, and included in those bonds are natural disaster clauses and pandemic clauses, ensuring that for the first time, if we should be hit, somebody knock some wood for me please, if we should be hit by a hurricane of a certain threshold, that we are in a position to pause the payment of our debt, both principal and interest for two years, and not have to do what befell the people of Dominica, who had to look for debt payments immediately after Hurricane Maria, instead of being able to focus on shelter and food for their citizens at the very time that a hurricane has hit. And the notion that we are safe from a climate crisis can be immediately debunked, because week by week, with the latest being the tragic circumstances befalling the children of the United States in Texas with the raising of the banks of the river, of the Guadalupe River, reminding us that none of us can escape the hands and clutches of the climate crisis. So my friends, I ask us please to recall that there is much work to be done. I have not spoken to you today about the necessary work of the reform of the governance of this community and the funding of this community, because I believe that the heads of government must confront it and not believe that we can continue to wear the garbs of twenty and thirty years ago, as we live in a world that is completely different today. And we must find the boldness, I believe our preacher told us today, Bishop Pitkin, when you said to us, let us have the boldness to move thought into action, because without that, our region will not be ready for the defence of small states. It is my view that in the absence of an international rules-based order, and we are seeing it being threatened day by day, in the absence of an international rules-based order, countries such as ours will find it difficult to survive. And this, my friends, is the first real threat that we have had since becoming independent nations. The notion that others may want to conquer again is not beyond their imagination and not beyond our reality. But equally, the price of sovereignty is no longer simply that which we have started to do in the first two or three generations since independence. The price of sovereignty now extends to our ability to control our information and to generate our content. We have to be able to own our own satellites and not be the victim of somebody pulling them on us because they do not like the position we took on a war across the world somewhere or someplace. We have to generate our own content, because it is only us who know our reality, and we cannot simply be the victims of other people's judgement as to who we are and what we stand for. And if we don't do these things, then we will fail to recognise that the new armada and the new flotilla are not the ships that came and brought our forefathers here under protests, but in fact, the new armada and the new flotilla is that which will control our mind. And we know what Marcus Messiah-Garvey told us about emancipating our mind from mental slavery. If ever there was a time for us to listen to these entreaties, it is now. And as we do these serious things, let us not remember that we as Caribbean people have a flair, that we know how to walk and talk, that we know how to talk and dance, that we know how to sing and move and reflect. And as we remember that, may I have the distinct pleasure and opportunity to invite you all to Carifest of fifteen in Barbados, from the twenty-second to the thirty-first of August, where we shall move from the big conversations to the dance and to the art and to the food and to the fashion and to all aspects of Caribbean creative presentation. But as we do that, let us also remember that those arts is what will give us the creativity to fight the battles against violence in this region, to fight the battles for reparations that are so necessary and for which Haiti ought to be the moral epicentre, to be able to also find the creativity that will allow Caribbean citizens to access a global market while remaining rooted in this region. So I expect to see you there, and I look forward to ensuring that you have a wonderful time. For that festival will only now be held on the fifteenth time in over fifty years, and that tells us the importance of it, but it tells us the seminal nature as to why we need to be reminded that even if cricket does not allow us always to be proud, we remain committed. But it is our culture ultimately, our food, our language, our expression of creativity that will forever ensure that if politicians don't get it right, the people of this region will continue to remind us through that expression of creativity that there can always and only be Caribbean citizens with local roots, with global aspirations, and ensuring that we can continue to be that humanising influence on the global civilisation that we live in, such that we can work to save both people and planet in this very, very difficult time for global civilisation. I wish you, Andrew, all the best as you take up this mantle of leadership of this regional institution at the very time when the region needs it more than ever. And I say simply to all of us, that if ever there was a time for us to resume the public education on Caribbean civilisation and the need for Caribbean integration, it is now. Let not Brexit be our future.
Thank you, Prime Minister Motley. The Prime Minister hinted to our next performance, and drawing from the timeless voices of Luther Vandross, Barry White and Teddy Pendergrass, this performer is a dynamic and soulful recording artist who catapulted international fame as the winner of Jamaica's Digicel Rising Stars Talent Showcase in 2023. Here to sing "I Can See Clearly Now" by another renowned Jamaican artist, Jimmy Cliff, help me welcome Ramon Watson. Help me welcome Ramon Watson. Well done. And now, ladies and gentlemen, it's the moment to hear from the Chairman of the Conference. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, please join me in welcoming the Prime Minister of Jamaica and Chairman of the Caribbean Community, Dr. The Most Honourable Andrew Holness, to address this opening ceremony of the 49th regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government.
Thank you, thank you, colleagues. Let me acknowledge Senator Janice Allen, representing the leader of the opposition, Dr. Carla Barnett, CARICOM Secretary General, Chief Ministers and Ministers of Government, members of the judiciary, the newly installed President of the Caribbean Court of Justice, the Honourable Mr. Justice Winston Anderson, members of the diplomatic corps, representatives of regional and international organizations, distinguished delegates, specially invited guests, members of the media. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Jamaica. We are delighted that you have joined us on my assumption of the chairmanship of the Caribbean community for the remainder of 2025. I thank my colleague and friend, the Honourable Mia Motley, Prime Minister of Barbados, for ably steering us through the first six months of the year. And she has done so with the fervor and determination and eloquence for which she is well known and admired. I want to thank you, Mia, because we started out at the same time. And I was a bit worried when you said, young and romantic then. And you caught up to say, still young and romantic now. So we are still in the same category. But I also thought that you would have used another one of Jimmy Cliff's great songs. Yes, we all can see clearly after the event, after the challenge, after we have exercised our duties. And we all should be aspirational and we all should hope for the best and we all should persevere. Yes, we can get it if we really want it. But upon assuming this role, I am also cognizant, Mia, as your presentation would have alerted us to, there are still many rivers to cross. And so my job will be to get us across those rivers safely and get across as many of them as possible. And don't worry, you are in safe hands. And I am especially pleased that so many of my colleagues are here in Montego Bay, some of whom were with me in 2018. And I'm looking at one of my political fathers, Ralph Godzalves. But allow me to take time to congratulate my friend, the Honourable John Bruseno, Prime Minister of Belize, whose government was re-elected in March. And though her delegation is not here, I must congratulate the Honourable Kamla Persad Bisseso, newly elected Prime Minister of Trinidad and Tobago. We also acknowledge the return to office of the Honourable David Burt as Premier of Bermuda and the Honourable Charles Washington-Missick as Premier of the Turks and Caicos Islands. In her absence also, we acknowledge the election of the Honourable Cora Richardson-Hodge, Premier of Angola, who is the first woman to serve in this distinguished capacity. Excellencies, we have some special guests with us. His Excellency Valdez Erkrisa, Secretary General of the International Criminal Police Organization, Interpol. And we look forward to the fruitful exchanges that we will have with him to further enrich our partnerships at all levels. I'm also pleased to welcome our special guest, His Excellency Albert Ramdin, a son of CARICOM, and the first from our region to serve as Secretary General of the Organization of American States, the OAS. I also wish to acknowledge and once more welcome Dr. Carla Barnett, Secretary General of CARICOM, and our team, with whom I will be working even more closely since assuming the Chair of the Community. Thank you, Secretary General and your team, for your usual support. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, our theme, people, partnership, and prosperity. Promoting a secure and sustainable future captures the essence of our regional purpose. It reflects a profound truth that security and resilience are not optional. They are foundations for prosperity. That people-centered development and strategic partnerships are not merely aspirational, they are essential. As small states, we are vulnerable, not just to global economic shocks and natural hazards, but to being marginalized in a world where power and influence often outweigh genuine need. And that is why we must think strategically, act collaboratively, and remain focused on the values and interests that unite us. Prime Minister Motley expressed, as I've said quite eloquently, many of the threats which we face, which as small countries we grapple with. And oftentimes, as leaders, as we contemplate these challenges and we look at our size relative to the rest of the world, it can be daunting. And sometimes we may have the expectation that exceptions will be made for us, that our case will be treated with deference and deferential favor. But I think that as we enter upon the new order which seems to be emerging in the world, that we must be strategic, we must strengthen our institutions, we must take responsibility for our own destiny, because that is the only way we're going to only really get it if we really want it. It means we must focus on people because human development must be the center of the integration mission, it must be the center of the development mission. Ensuring food security, access to decent work, climate protection, and importantly, opportunities for our youth, who make up 60% of our population. We must focus on people. We must also focus on partnerships because global progress is built on networks of trust. We need stronger ties within CARICOM and with strategic global partners in Africa, North and South America, Europe, Asia, the Pacific, and the Middle East. In the new dispensation which is emerging, it is clear that the world is not unipolar and that there are opportunities that we must explore. There are gains which we have left on the table, unexplored. And as a community, we must strengthen South-South cooperation, we must strengthen our trade cooperation with Africa, and we must strengthen our internal cooperation. The resources in CARICOM are sufficient for us to provide for the needs of our people. Guyana with energy and land, Suriname with energy and land, Trinidad, Jamaica with incredible human resources. What has stopped us for these many years? We have been saying we really want to get it. Did we really want it? I think that the emerging global situation must now push us to really get it, Mia. We can get it because the time to get the prosperity for our people is now. But that prosperity must be inclusive. It can't be for some. It has to be for everyone in this region, including our brothers and sisters in Haiti. It must be sustainable. And it must be resilient. Sustainability and resilience are the two new buzzwords now that every government must focus on. And so it is that the policies that we will pursue in CARICOM, whatever it is, whether it is the institutional structures that we will have to reexamine, the trade policies that we will have to pursue, the security policies that we will have to pursue, they must be pursued through the prism, through the lens of sustainability and resilience. So Jamaica will continue to champion initiatives that will make these three pillars, people, partnership, and prosperity, not just aspirational. Because we have seen leaders come before with these aspirations. We have seen the words expressed before. The problem has always been our ability to be bold enough, strategic enough, systematic enough, disciplined enough, to convert these dreams and aspirations, these words, into reality. The presence of delegations from 48 countries today is a powerful statement of global confidence in CARICOM and in our shared agenda. We are meeting at a time of intense international activity. In the months ahead, CARICOM will engage the world through the second CARICOM Africa Summit in Ethiopia and during the 80th anniversary of the United Nations. As small, vulnerable states, the unavoidable reality of the climate crisis stands as a sobering reminder each year, especially during the annual hurricane season. And as we prepare for COP30 in Belem, Brazil, our call is urgent and clear. The promises of the Paris Agreement must be met, both in emissions reductions and access to climate finance at the level and scale required. Our discussions tomorrow will give special attention to COP30 preparations and climate finance, which remain defining issues for our region's survival and prosperity. You know, for others, the issue of climate change may be an academic... You know, for others, the issue of climate change may be an academic discussion between scientists trying to determine whether the data set is accurate or whether historically climate has changed over time and therefore climate changing now is nothing new, an academic discourse. But last year, just around this time, Jamaica was steering down the earliest forming and probably the quickest forming category four hurricane, which devastated a third of our So for us, climate change is not an academic discussion. Climate change is real. We live it almost every day. And the impact of this has to be understood from the fiscal level and the need for financing, but certainly because of our size. A weather event in Texas and our sympathies and condolences goes out to the people of the United States, in particular the people of Texas, who were impacted by the recent weather events which resulted in flooding. But the impact of this will have no effect, literally, on the overall fiscal situation of the United States. A similar weather event in any of our economies would have a devastating effect. And therefore, we must continue to strongly advocate for climate justice and climate financing. And you have my assurance that Jamaica will continue to be a strong advocate for climate justice and climate finance. Friends, there can be no sustained prosperity without security. A July twenty-twenty-four report by the United Nations Office on Drugs and Crime entitled Caribbean gangs, drugs, firearms, and gang networks in Jamaica, St. Lucia, Guyana, and Trinidad and Tobago, points to a worrying combination of risk factors, including surging drug production in South America, the proliferation and competition of transnational and local gangs, and high availability and use of firearms that have contributed to soaring homicide rates. If the situation in Haiti is an indicator, these are not ordinary times and they require urgent action. We must dismantle the influence of gangs in our communities, disrupt their financing, and cut off access to weapons. I am on record as saying that we need to launch a war on gangs of a similar magnitude and nature to the war on terror. Yes, I would invite you to clap for that. Aside from the climate threat, the threat that is most likely to have an existential threat in the near term for many of our states would be the growth of gangs. Many Caribbean states, by virtue of our history and the kind of civilization which we wish to develop, would seem to categorize gangs as a social problem, a problem caused by alienation of youth, poverty, breakdown in social mores and values, and therefore, the policy response must be or should be a social response, one that treats crime and violence as a public health crisis. And this is so, there is no question, that it is a social problem why ninety percent of persons involved in crime are males. And speaking for Jamaica, ninety percent of those who are victims of homicides are males. So yes, there is that strong social component. But I believe our society and the way in which we think about crime and violence needs to evolve to accept and understand the evolved nature of the challenge we face. And the truth is that what we are now facing is the organization of violence. It is the organization of violence for profit. It is not merely street-level, dispossessed, socially excluded youngsters. There is a level of intelligence, a level of resources, a level of organization that has been brought to crime, and violence is being used to support a profit motive. And my own view is that policy and jurisprudence needs to evolve to address this matter. As I said, the situation in Haiti is only an example that we should look at very carefully. And I guess that's the true word. The Security Expo, which you can view just outside this room in a couple of minutes from now, is intended to spotlight our shared commitment to build a safer, more resilient region by exchanging ideas, innovations, and best practices. It is also an opportunity for you to see how the significant investments made by the government of Jamaica in national security over the past nine years are yielding results in crime reduction and public safety. I just want to say here that the scale and magnitude of the problem which is being faced by almost all member countries of CARICOM cannot be addressed overnight. It took forty years for the problem to emerge to where it is, and it will not be solved by short-term measures. It will require significant investment, but it will also require unified public support. And as we observe the challenges in several of our member states and we see the rising homicide rates, we also see political dissonance. And so it is absolutely important that we come together as a region so that our individual publics can see and appreciate that they are not alone in this problem, that the gangs in Jamaica likely have a connection with gangs in St. Lucia, in Trinidad, in Haiti, in the Bahamas, and that there needs to be joint coordinated action from the regional level. And I believe, from what I have seen and experienced in working with my colleagues, that there is a strong appetite for regional cooperation to treat with the security matters that are affecting our individual countries. And as Chair, you have my assurance that the matter of security regionally and in terms of individual countries, that this will be a matter of great priority under The forty-ninth regular meeting will also provide another critical platform for dialogue on the situation in Haiti. We remain committed to advancing solutions that promote peace, stability, and development for our sister nation and by extension, the wider community. Jamaica was one of the first countries to give a commitment that we would support Haiti with security personnel and to raise the call for support for Haiti. As Mia had pointed out, the appetite to support Haiti seemed to have been lost, the international momentum in support of Haiti seemed to have slowed. We cannot be true to our principles in CARICOM. If we do not redouble our efforts in the international community to garner support for the mission in Haiti, we cannot leave our brothers and sisters in Haiti at the So Haiti and the mobilization of international support for the security efforts in Haiti will be another area of significant effort and priority for CARICOM under my chairmanship. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, while not on the agenda, it is important that we take note of the outcome of last week's Fourth Conference on Financing for Development as stated in the civil commitment. Chief among these are the actions needed to close the four trillion dollar SDG financing gap and advancing a multilateral ecosystem which is more inclusive, representative, equitable, and effective. Importantly, the conference secured reaffirmation of the special circumstances of small island developing states and the Abbas Agenda. Jamaica will continue to use our co-chairmanship of the UN Secretary-General's SDG Stimulus Group and the Group of Friends of SDG Financing at the UN for advocacy to ensure that the commitments made are not mere words on paper but translate into tangible outcomes for the benefit of future generations of the citizens of CARICOM. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, since its inception, the CSME has been acknowledged as holding seeds of great potential, yet many aspects of operationalization continue to elude us, including that of free movement. As the world presses us to strengthen our collective self-sufficiency, we can feel encouraged that twenty-twenty-five has already marked a turning point with the completion of the signature by participating member states of the Protocol of Enhanced Cooperation. This development represents a timely and valuable opportunity to accelerate the efforts of countries. I look forward to our discussions in this context. Jamaica recently became the eighth country to have participated in national consultations on the implementation of CSME initiatives with the active support of the CARICOM Secretariat. These broad-based engagements across the region are designed to deepen stakeholder understanding of the CSME and to showcase the concrete benefits it offers. They represent an important step towards building broader public support and strengthening confidence in the integration process. We commend the Secretariat on its selection and appointment of CSME youth ambassadors, who will also be engaged in this process. As a CARICOM lead on trade, external trade negotiations, I will continue to work with my colleagues to facilitate reasoned and balanced recommendations on how we can best navigate uncertain dynamics, ensure that our voices are heard in all relevant fora, and that our perspectives advance the objectives of a free, transparent, rules-based, inclusive, and equitable multilateral trading system. Our heads' subcommittee for this area convenes again this week and will report back to the plenary. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, this conference will address a wide range of human and social development issues: telecommunications, transport, industrial growth, and demographic shifts. Alongside these functional priorities, it is clear that key institutional aspects of our regional movement now require renewed focus as we strive to strengthen both internal coordination and external partnerships. Allow me to say a few words about youth engagement, because I am resolute in my belief that young people must have a voice in shaping the decisions that affect their future. Youth across the region have thoughts and ideas about what we are trying to put in place for them and future generations. As key drivers and consumers of technological advancement, they hold immense potential to contribute meaningfully to our development goals. It is important that we engage them in a deliberate, sustained, and meaningful way. Let this meeting send a clear signal that we believe in our youth, we include them in the decision-making process for their future, and that their inclusion is not just symbolic but real. And as we are talking about youth, who are oftentimes the main consumers of technology, social media, and artificial intelligence, I'm very happy that Sister Mia has raised this issue publicly, as we have internally and within our own countries and cabinets have discussed the impact of how our culture, the essence of who we are, is being changed in dramatic ways that are having significant negative impact on our societies. This is not a call to regulate, to restrict, or censor, but I believe that if we are not careful, the Caribbean civilization, quoting Mia's characterization of who we are, what we are trying to build, could easily evaporate. And so, as we talk about our youth, we must include them in a discussion about how we preserve our culture, our values, our mores, how we preserve the Caribbean people. how we preserve the Caribbean people. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, it would be difficult to speak about our priorities as a region without acknowledging the broader global context in which we operate. From the humanitarian crisis in Gaza, to the escalating tensions in the Middle East, to the prolonged war in the Ukraine and under-reported conflicts in Africa, each speaks to a more divided and fragile world. These realities affect us through energy prices, food insecurity, migration, and more. In this moment, we must be resolute in preserving Caricom as a zone of peace and reaffirm our commitment to working with the international community to promote de-escalation, uphold diplomacy, and pursue lasting solutions grounded in dialogue and mutual respect. We have much ground to cover over the next few days. Hopefully, we'll cross some of the rivers that I have outlined. But certainly, we will prepare the next generation to be able to cross those rivers because, yeah, we will get it because we really want it. Right, Mia? So, as I conclude, I draw inspiration from the words of the right-excellent Marcus Basayagave, Jamaica's first national hero, who urged us to take advantage of every opportunity. And where there is none, make it ourselves. And in the spirit of possibility, we are reminded by the great Sir Derek Walcott that there is always more to see. Let us therefore move forward with clarity, with a sense of optimism that yes, we can get it, but also with a deep sense of purpose, an understanding of what the realities we face are, with no expectations of favors from the world. We are independent. We are strong. And we have what it takes to fulfill the Caricom dream of prosperity for all our people. Let us reignite and reaffirm our unity as one Caribbean people with purpose and pride. We will get it because we really want it. And it's no clearer for us to cross all the rivers that are there. God bless you and thank you.
Thank you, Prime Minister Holness. Ladies and gentlemen, our final performance is one that celebrates the Caribbean region. Fellow Jamaicans should know that the Jamaica Military Band is the oldest continuous service unit in Jamaica, as a matter of fact, in the Jamaica Defense Force. The band's longevity predates the JDF because it was originally the regimental band of the old West India Regiment, disbanded in 1926 after 131 years of service. On the 8th of December 1926, the Mayor of Kingston brought a motion in the Legislative Council of Jamaica to retain the band. The motion passed on the 26th of February 1927, the day after the band's men were actually discharged. The full unit became part of the local forces, renamed the Jamaica Military Band. And uniquely, the Jamaica Military Band has already celebrated its 98th birthday. Under the direction of Captain Rafael Salazar, ladies and gentlemen, the Jamaica Military Band celebrating Caricom.
We want to thank you for joining and remaining with us and for sharing your comments with us. We ask that you stay with us a little longer as we follow Prime Minister, Dr. The Most Honourable Andrew Michael Holness and the other regional heads to the exhibition hall of the Convention Centre, where they will officially open the Jamaica Constabulary for Security Technology Expo. The theme of the exhibition is leveraging technology for security and operational efficiency. The Prime Minister will be met on arrival by the Jamaican Deputy Prime Minister and Minister of National Security, Dr Horace Chang, and the Commissioner of Police, Dr Kevin Blake. As they go towards the expo, we noted that the main objective is to demonstrate how Jamaica has integrated advanced technology into law enforcement operations, improving incidents response, investigative processes, and strategic deployment while showcasing specialized units tackling organized crime.
Forty-six countries represented here today. We have the Caribbean and Latin America, we have Europe, Asia, North and Central America, and the Mediterranean, and I think that is worthy of a round of applause. Now, as we formally close this part of our proceedings, we're going to ask that you stand and remain in place at your seats until the procession and heads of state and government of the Caribbean community and our special guests depart the ballroom. They will go first to view the exhibition, and after they are completed, then it will be open to all. Of course, ladies and gentlemen, you are invited to the reception which follows in the courtyard. It has been a wonderful experience, and it is only the beginning. I bid you good evening.
Now, the Security Technology Expo also aims to highlight the value of local, regional, and international partnerships in law enforcement. Now, only last week, thousands of Jamaicans were delighted to see the JCF team in action at two expos held over multiple days at each end of the island. Now, the rest of the region through this broadcast get to see a little bit of what we enjoyed. We will listen in as the team goes through the expo. A reminder that this broadcast is brought to you by the team at the Jamaica Information Service, the official information arm of the Government of Jamaica.
...within the organization. So, all technology that spanned across all portfolio. That's your responsibility, including the setting up and the maintenance of our infrastructure. And you'll get a much better brief as we visit each of the quadrants, and the technical experts will take you through them with more detail. To our rear, which is our fourth quadrant, is a small subset of our partners. And so, we have our national task force against trafficking in person, which is the Ministry of National Security Task Force. We have our national identification system, and also we have our Jamaica Search, our cyber incident response team. And so, without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, we will start our demonstration from our investigation quadrant, where we look at all those capabilities that we use to investigate. So, for this section of the expo, Mr Bernard will be walking you through the various capabilities.
Good morning, Prime Minister and other dignitaries. Yes, I'm just checking if everybody is listening, yes. So, we welcome you to our mini expo, as the Commissioner said, and this is the Crime and Security Portfolio. And the Crime and Security Portfolio has the responsibility of treating with all matters of security and crime-related responses. As Commissioner said, I am Deputy Superintendent Miguel Bernard, and I'm the second-in-command of the Forensic Services Branch, which is one branch within the Crime and Security Portfolio, which is made up of the Intelligence Branch, the Counterterrorism and Organized Crime Branch, as well as the Criminal Investigation Branch. And what we'll be showing you here briefly today is how we use technology in investigations. So, for example, if you may affix your eyes to our smart board here, this is an example of how we both use the technology for educational purposes as well as to assist in our investigations. So, for example, and this will allow you to, even after we have had this display and demonstration here, you can come with the board and interact and get more detailed information. So, for example, if we look at our digital forensics department, which we are very proud of. Our digital forensic department treats with all of these: computer forensics, mobile forensics, audiovisual forensics, for example. And this gives you a clear idea and background of how we use the technology to not just educate, but also to treat with our case reviews and case conferences. So, I'll take you to just one more section. For example, if we're doing a case review, all of this would have our case file in it. And in our case file, there are various components. You have the case report, as well as we would do some crime scene reconstruction. And this reconstruction is a 3D rendering of the scene that you will see, that we have reconstructed over here. And you will see some ideas of how we do some trajectory analysis, blood spatter analysis, for example, etc. We also, I want to show you also, just two more things in this case file. You will also see our visual identification unit, where they do composite sketches, and I'm sure that you will be very, very intrigued as to how they do their work. And also, which we are very proud of, I think one of the only law enforcement agencies in the world, that's how we look at firearms. So, for example, we have our software here that is developed here in Jamaica, in the JCF, where it shows us a top-ten list, top 100, we can dissect it all wanted, of all the wanted guns that are across Jamaica. So, this map you are looking at here is a visualization of all of where a gun becomes wanted, Prime Minister and other invited guests. If the firearm is featured in an incident, and you will see the ballistic team, the scene of crime, for example, would go to the crime scene, recover the ballistic evidence, or if it is from a post mortem, it would go to the lab, they would do the analysis, and that analysis, the data will be plugged into the system, and the system will check the database and see whether or not this is something that has a signature in the system already. If it doesn't have a signature, the system automatically assigns a unique name to the firearm, and that is what is used to track it throughout its lifetime. Now, when the system is looking for that unique signature, it will see whether or not this is a gun that has been seized already, or it is still on our radar as a firearm that has not been recovered, and automatically will designate it as a wanted firearm. And that would feed into, for example, the crime, one of the five strategic priorities of the Crime and Security Portfolio, which is our focus deterrent strategy, as well as our linked investigations. And so, we will focus on identifying, so this graph that you're seeing here, this is real-life data of how all these guns in Jamaica are connected. And from the strategic level, you can sit and look at the data and allow us to both drive operational responses as well as investigations.
When someone uses a gun, they leave a footprint, a fingerprint, they leave some ballistic evidence.
Yes, sir.
And you will feed that into this system, and it makes a connection, whether or not this gun was used in another crime somewhere else. If the evidence links to someone else. So, this will give you the connection based upon the gun. So, you will be connected to place, people, and an event.
You're correct, Prime Minister. So... We use the Etrace platform. We use also the Integrated Ballistic Identification System, which a lot of our partners in the region as well have that system. And the system, they can network and share data and identify movement of firearms, for example, between Jamaica and the Cayman Islands. So, the Commissioner was also asking me to speak to how we look at even levels of association. So, we see firearms that are directly connected, as well as firearms that are indirectly connected through other firearms. And this data, and this system is one of the system that we have used to prosecute, successfully prosecute one of the largest gang investigations in the Caribbean. And this data featured prominently in terms of helping us to identify where the guns are, how the organization is organized, how they connect with other divisions, etc. And this is just a snippet of what we, the technology that we use in investigations. And I think I will invite you now to step into...
It's just very important to say that the groupings can give you a sense of the gang operating. So, when the firearms are all connected, you get a sense of how the gang is actually connected.
So, as we step into the forensic apparatus of the Crime and Security Portfolio, the first unit that we have come upon here is the Visual Identification Unit. And I will allow the technocrats, I have here Detective Inspector Kelly, as well as Detective Sergeant Wright, who they are the technical experts in the visual identification, to explain how we use this technology to support our investigations.
Good afternoon, welcome to Jamaica, and hope you're enjoying this day. As Mr Bernard said, I'm Inspector Kelly, and this is Sergeant Wright from the Visual Identification Unit. We'll give you a quick demonstration of how the software works and how it assists our investigator in capturing criminal suspect. Sergeant Wright?
Thank you, Sir Kelly. Composite sketches are used primarily to identify unknown suspects, aid in finding missing persons for fugitive enhancement, as also the facial reconstruction of decomposing bodies that are unidentified. This allows the JCF to save time and money in its investigative process through the engagement of the public, through traditional and social media. We have here an image, and I'll show you the age progression feature, which aids with fugitive enhancement and missing persons. As you can see, the changes in the facial features which occur as a consequence of estimating what the person would look like after aging over a period of time. There are several other features that can be utilized to adjust how the sketch looks, so it matches what the witness or the victim describes to the composite artist. Well, if I go back to that feature, what it does, it allows the image to change as it relates to the expression of the face. So, currently now, it's a kind expression, and we can shift to where it's a little bit more hostile. So, as you can see, and if I remove... It changes the facial features. And there are several other things that we can do with the composite sketches. You will see now on screen. And these are notable cases where the composite was used to aid in identifying the suspect. So, you can see the proximity to the likeness of the individual. And in some cases, it can be up to 90% in likeness. Yes, Daniel Rowe. So, Daniel Rowe was a child that initially went missing, and then it was discovered that she was murdered. And the witness was able to identify the person who took her from the school that she attended and produce these sketches. The sketches were then used to aid the police in identifying who the person was. And consequently, eventually led to a conviction.
So, a second feature of the Visual Identification Unit, we conduct various type of identification parades. So, back then, we all aware of the one-way mirror that people stand under some number. So, that is now, we now use that on the computer. There's a specified software that we now use to do identification parade. So, what this allows us to do, it keeps us mobile. So, if the witness is in the hospital or the victim, we can now take the identification parade to the witness in the hospital. If it's a sensitive case, with the Witness Protection Program, we can go and do the viewing anywhere. And this is how it appears to the witness when we are showing it to them. So, instead of the lineup, the witness now, the physical lineup, this is now burned onto a CD, and we can take it anywhere the witness is located, and it is now shown to them. Mr Bernard?
So, thank you very much, Mr Kelly. So, next, I will take you to our Multi-Biometric Identification System, commonly referred to as the MBS. And the MBS is the key technology that we use in order to identify latent impressions, most commonly fingerprints. And I'll allow Detective Corporal Hines to speak to the MBS and how it is used in our investigations.
We thank you for joining us for our broadcast of the 49th meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community Caricom Opening Ceremony. My name is Jena Francis, and it was my absolute honor and pleasure to be your host this afternoon. We want to remind you to stay informed on the activities and highlights from these three days of activities and dialogue by following our social media pages and also visiting our website at www.jis.gov.jm. On behalf of the entire production team, we want to say thank you for joining us and also to stay tuned to our coverage as the Jamaica Constabulary for Security Technology Expo, as the tour continues. Thank you, good night.
...housebreaker in St. Andrew Night Division.
Thank you very much, Ms Hines, excellent. So, we will move quickly to our Communication, Forensics, and Cybercrime Division. Within this forensic architecture that we have in the Crime and Security Portfolio, we treat with both the traditional forensics, which is the DNA, the fingerprint, etc. But we also have within that Integrated Forensic Services Branch now our digital component. And I allow Detective Constable Murray to speak to what it is that the CFCD does and how they aid in the investigation aspect of the JCF.
All right, so I want to take this opportunity to welcome you to our island of Jamaica. My name is Andre Murray. I'm a detective constable attached to the Communication, Forensics, and Cybercrime Division. Of course, gentlemen, I want to implore you that we are now in the age where the ubiquity of smartphone has now transformed the world into a different space. And as a result, every crime now has a digital component. So, under the auspices of the Forensic Services Branch, of course, we have our division. Now, what you're looking at on this desk right here may look like a very simple device. However, it's called a Celebrite U-Fed Forensic Extraction Device. It's a battlefield-ready device, not only is it portable, it's also...